I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks God for America. Roll call please Kathleen.
Wilson Anderson here. Davidson?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
McCambell.
First on the agenda tonight we have three block proclamations. The first is Fire Prevention Week, Councilwoman Anderson.
Whereas the city of Burlington is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting Burlington, U.S. Fire Departments responded to 365,500 home fires in 2015 according to the National Fire Protection Association. U.S. Home Fires resulted in 2,560 civilian deaths in 2015 representing the majority, seventy-eight percent of all U.S. Fire Deaths. And whereas newer homes are built with lightweight material that burn faster than older home constructions, many of today's products and furnishings produce toxic gases and smoke when burned, making it impossible to see and breathe within moments. These conditions contribute to a much smaller window of time for people to escape a home fire safely, with people having as little as one to two minutes to escape from the time the smoke alarm sounds. And whereas, a home fire escape plan provides the skillset and know-how to quickly and safely escape a home fire situation. A home fire escape plan includes two exits from every room in the home, a path to the outside from each exit, smoke alarms in all required locations, and a meeting place outside where everyone in the home will meet upon exiting. Home fire escape plans should be developed by all members of the household. Practicing a home fire escape plan twice a year ensures that everyone in the household knows what to do in a real fire situation. And whereas Burlington Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. Burlington's residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2017 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Every Second Counts, Plan Two Ways Out," effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of developing a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practicing it twice a year. And now therefore we, the City Council of the City of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby proclaim October 8th through the 14th, 2017, as Fire Prevention Week. We urge all residents of Burlington to develop a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practice it twice a year, and to participate in the many public safety activities and efforts of the Burlington Fire Department during the Fire Prevention Week 2017. Signed and sealed the second day of October 2017, Shane A. McCambell, Mayor.
And with that, I'll add a few notes to Ms. Anderson's proclamation reading. The week that Fire Prevention Week is observed is the same week in October that the Great Chicago Fire of 1871 occurred, so that's how it messes up. Incidentally, the same day in Pesticore, Wisconsin, they had a wildland fire that caused five times as much death, fifteen hundred deaths, that people virtually don't know about. But the Chicago Fire got the headline. This year in Iowa, there's been twenty-nine fire deaths so far. That is down from last year, so that's a good trend. On average, seven people die in home fires every day. The volatility of the furniture that we use in our homes now is much more flammable, what we call heirloom furniture. We're basically sitting on foam which is made out of petroleum products, so you have very little time to get out of the house. That's why smoke detectors are very important. The theme this year is "Every Second Counts, Plan Two Ways Out." It's a good idea when you go into a venue to know two ways to get out of a venue. Cooking equipment is a leading cause of home structure fires. Also, the elderly, over sixty-five, and children under ten suffer the most casualties and deaths. So things to do with your families this week include: check your smoke detectors, replace the batteries in the smoke detectors, know two ways out, inspect your homes for general fire safety, and have an escape plan. Another thing is important, have a muster area outside your house where the family knows to go and meet. Most importantly, get out, call 911, and don't go back in. So the things the Fire Department will be doing this week, we'll be doing fire drills at all the schools, public and private, this week. And we're doing our poster contest this year where the fourth graders have participated in this contest. The Art Center does the judging of the posters, we'd like to thank them for that. And Bickles Bicycles historically has given us a bicycle for the grand prize winner every year. Your Fire Department offers a smoke detector home installation program. If we have an inventory of smoke detectors now, if you give us a call, we'll come out and put them in your house free of charge. If you need your batteries changed, we'll come to your house. We don't have any batteries right now, but if you provide them, we'll put them in for you. Elderly people and people that aren't able to get up, we're happy to work it into our schedule. The only caveat I offer is sometimes we don't come at the planned time because we're busy on an emergency response. So thank you, Council and citizens, for recognizing Fire Prevention Week.
Thank you to the Burlington Fire Department.
Thank you. Thank you Bruce. Thank you for all you guys and guys do. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your support.
Next proclamation is the Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence, dating violence, and stalking affect women, children, and men of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds, causing long-term physical, psychological, and emotional harm. Whereas one in three Americans have witnessed an incident of domestic violence, children who experience domestic violence are at a higher risk for failure in school, mental illness, substance abuse, suicide, and may choose violence as a way to solve problems later in life. Domestic violence in rural communities exists as a hidden, silent, and often unrecognized crime that is often underreported. And whereas through the inspiration, courage, and persistence of victims of domestic violence, their children and advocates, our communities are learning to recognize the impact of violence in the home and intimate relationships. And whereas Domestic Violence Intervention Program has worked to end violence in intimate relationships for more than thirty-eight years through the collaboration partnerships of advocates, volunteers, local municipalities, criminal justice, health and human services, faith communities, business leaders, and private citizens. Our community's achievements should be commended. We must continue our commitment to respect and support victims of domestic violence and prevent future violence in our community. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month throughout the city of Burlington, Iowa, and urge our citizens to work together to eliminate domestic violence, dating violence, and stalking from our community. Signed and sealed the second day of October 2017, Shane A. McCambell, Mayor. And Delaney, and I'm sorry, I don't know your name, are here to have some thoughts about this. Thank you.
My name is Delaney Dixon. I'm the Assistant Executive Director at the Domestic Violence Intervention Program, and this is my colleague and Des Moines Advocate, Allison, here this evening. We want to thank you, thank you Mayor Protem Davidson for reading the proclamation, and thank you, City Council, as well as community members. This is critical work that we do, working with women, men, and children to survive domestic violence, but more importantly, to work towards prevention of domestic violence. Our ultimate goal is to work ourselves right out of a job and that this is not an issue in communities. But right now, it plagues our communities, and it's a silent killer of individuals that are your neighbors, your sons, your daughters, your mothers, and your fathers, and your children. Your kids are going to school with other children who are suffering. The Domestic Violence Intervention Program's goal this month is to make people aware, to make them know that this is not something that we have to be ashamed of to experience, but that we should be ashamed of if we're ignoring it, and that we really need to go ahead and open our eyes and see what we can do to assist people who are going through this. Because if the communities and individuals are watching, then it is much more difficult for perpetrators to continue to abuse their family members and their loved ones. If there's nothing else that anyone can do in the community, it's know our 1-800 number. I think some people are scared to get involved because they don't know what it means, and it's a very complicated issue. But our 1-800 number is something that people can direct people towards, and they can use it in their own time, in their own space. Our goal is safety. We want to help people, work with people from where they are, to help them identify what they believe is to be safe, and to get them along that path. It's a long path, it's a winding path. It doesn't always turn out the way that family members would like or community members would like, but it's a path worth taking towards safety. So again, I would like to thank you all for recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month. This month in particular, in our community, we plan to do two fundraisers, and they're both on this Saturday. There is a pancake breakfast at Applebee's at eight o'clock on Saturday. And then at both of the Hy-Vee's, the local Hy-Vee's, they're going to do a grocery drive, a shop for safety. So if you happen to be doing your weekly grocery shopping, advocates and volunteers will be there to present you with a list of things that we utilize in this community, our local community, to help people who are fleeing domestic violence and working through their issues, to help feed them, to help babies have diapers, to help babies have formula, to help folks have fruits and vegetables and meat. Because the last thing that you want them to have to worry about is hunger in addition to being safe. So again, thank you very much. Is there anything I missed? Okay. Does anyone have any questions very quickly?
What's the 800 number? Do you know off the top of your head?
Yes, I do. Our 1-800 number is 1-800-373-1043.
And have you talked to Rob about getting on the radio and advertising your fundraisers here? Rob, I'm putting the pressure on you, man.
I've got Steve.
I don't know, but I will make sure that someone talks to you today.
Yes. I don't schedule.
All right, then we'll make sure that someone gives you a call probably tomorrow.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you for the work you do. Thank you. Thank you ladies. Our third proclamation is City Week, and Councilman Fleming.
Whereas city government is the government closest to most citizens and the one with the most direct daily impact upon its residents, city government is administered for and by its citizens and is dependent upon public commitment to and understanding of its many responsibilities. City government officials and employees share the responsibility to pass along their understanding of public services and their benefits. And whereas City Week Iowa is a very important time to recognize the important role played by city government in our lives, this week offers an important opportunity to spread the word to all citizens of Iowa that they can shape and influence the level of government which is closest to the people. And whereas the City of Burlington employees have joined together to teach students and other citizens about municipal government through a variety of different informational projects and events, and whereas City Week offers an important opportunity to convey to all citizens of Burlington that they can shape and influence government through their civic involvement. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby proclaim October 9th through the 13th, 2017, to be City Week in the City of Burlington, and encourage all citizens, city government officials, and employees to recognize and celebrate this week by learning more about their city and its service. Signed and sealed the second day of October 2017, Shane A. McCambell, Mayor.
And Rhonda is coming to give us some information.
Well, thank you, and I come here tonight accepting this not in my role as library director, but in my role as a member of a city staff team called PRIDE, which is an acronym for our city values statement. And that group started the recognition of City Week four years ago. So we've been coming for four years now with these proclamations. The first year, our activity was at the Central Fire Station, and then we moved out to the park. And this will be our third year doing City Day in the Park, which is out at Dankert Park, right by the pool, right in that turnaround there is where you'd want to come to. And so on October 14th, Saturday, from one to four, we will be having booths, tables for all the different departments. So the Fire Department, you should bring their smokehouse, the Police Department does a football toss, the Library will be doing bookmarks that the kids can make. So there'll be activities at every station that kids and families can participate in, and also they can ask questions of city staff members and get information about what each of the departments can offer in terms of services. We also, the mayor will be there doing an activity, and towards the end of the event, he'll be announcing the winner of the If I Were Mayor essay contest that we've done now for the last three years. And it's for seventh graders to enter, and those will win lunch with the mayor as their prize. And that actually is part of a bigger project that the state does. And so the winner, we then send on all of those to the state for possible scholarships as well. In addition to those activities, we partner with the Historical Society, and it's been very popular the last two years, we have hay rack rides that go through the park, and they do a little history of the park. And I know they're going to have a handout this year about historic things about the park. I say they do that the entire three hours, you have two hay racks going, and they stay very busy with those, so that's a fun one to do. The other thing is we partner with the Optimist Club, and they support the bounce houses. And this year, we're going to have two bounce houses. One's going to be a new one, a big giant obstacle course, so just another fun activity for kids to come out and do. There'll be face painting that some student volunteers are doing, there'll be snow cones and popcorn, just lots of fun things. And so we're really emphasizing a fun time to come down to the park, but also a chance, say, to get to know a little bit more about city services by going around and visiting the different tables that those departments have put together. So, does she have any other questions?
That's the fourteenth, correct?
October 14th, Saturday, October 14th from one to four.
One to four.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. That takes care of proclamations. If anyone would like to leave at that point, you're welcome to. The next item is Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Item 1 Consent Agenda that have been discussed are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. So, people in the audience, you have an agenda in front of you properly, but on the consent agenda, we have finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarette licenses, reports, and bonds. Five resolutions: a resolution adopting nuisance abatements for our properties, resolution approving a refund of liquor license for Mississippi Freight House Corp. doing businesses Big Muddies, resolution approving the purchase of a street flushing unit for Public Works, Street and Sewer Division, resolution approving professional service agreement with Stanley Consultants to perform design of the central bridge retaining while rehabilitation, resolution approving the creation and implementation of healthy neighborhoods programmed by the Community Development Department. We're setting a date of September 16th for a public hearing for consideration of a lease agreement between the City of Burlington and Burlington Community School District for use of Saunderson Park at 1310 Valley Street, Burlington, Iowa. Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to have any of these removed from the consent agenda? Council, do you?
I have a motion to approve all listed under Item 1 Consent Agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Kathleen?
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion's approved. Now is the time set for consideration of the sale of property locally known as 312 South 10th Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. And Mr. Tisland is going to tell us about those conditions.
And this property is located at 312 South 10th Street. It's located just north of Maple Street on the east side of 10th Street, three properties in from Maple Street. It is a single-family home built in 1858, one and a half story, four-bedroom, one-bath, forty-by-one-hundred-and-five-foot lot. This property is acquired through our abandoned building program, has similar conditions as our properties that we acquire for the purchaser. Defective items shall be repaired as needed. Licensed plumber and electrician shall inspect and sign off that such items in the property meet or are brought up to code. Sidewalks or parking areas shall be improved to meet current code standards as necessary. All permits shall be received and codes shall be met as applicable for work and occupancy of the home. Purchasers shall maintain property and yard and hold insurance on such property until approval, upon approval, sale by the City Council. Work shall be initiated within sixty days and completed within one-hundred-and-eighty days of approval by the council, with an extension of another one-hundred-and-eighty days with progress being made. Quick claim deed shall be transferred to the purchaser upon substantial completion of renovation of the residential home. So it is a property that does need work and rehab, repaired, be occupied, and the purchaser will be required to do that, but hopefully we can get it back into working order and positive impact on that neighborhood.
Okay. And here it says purchaser shall pay a minimum of $500 or 10% down within thirty days, correct?
Yep. Entire amount shall be paid within thirty days of approval.
Entire amount shall be paid in thirty days. Okay, thank you. According to my sheet, we have one bid from Lindsay Sales from Folsom, California for $500. We're ready to entertain any bids. If you'd come to the microphone and state your name, and maybe just kind of hang around if there's a couple of you that want to bid, hang around the microphone so we can have some back and forth if necessary. Is there anyone who would like to bid something more than $500 for this home?
First of all, I was going to say thank you all for all you do, and I appreciate having you back, and I thank you for staying. Anyways, everybody is doing their share, and I'm willing to take this project, and I'm willing to give you $1,000.
And tell us your name again.
I'm sorry, I'm Mohamed Noorouzi. I live off of Sunnyside Avenue in Burlington.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, just hang around there, please.
Sure.
Is there anyone else? The bid is $1,000.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Sales. I opened the bidding.
Okay.
Hi, nice to meet you all. Eric, nice to see you finally. I'll do $1,500.
Okay. $1,500 from Lindsay Sales.
I haven't changed my name yet, so I'm still Mohamed, $4,000.
$4,000 from Mohamed.
Can we have a $4,000?
Are you giving up already?
I am.
Shucks.
That's how we do business in Iowa. Can I talk about the other three lots?
Anybody else? Any other bids? $4,000 seems like a bargain. I don't see anyone else coming forward. Is that it? Once, twice? I don't make a very good auctioneer, but...
Sold.
It's yours for $4,000. I know. Now we're ready for motions.
A motion to close.
Second.
We have a motion to close the public hearing in a second. Kathleen?
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. I don't have an amendment on this.
You need to introduce a resolution first.
Okay. Have a resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 312 South 10th Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, and we'll entertain an amendment.
You should have it.
Okay. To amend Exhibit C of the resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 312 South 10th Street, City of Burlington, Des Moines, Iowa, that the property be sold to Mohamed, I gotta get your last names right.
Noorouzi.
Noorouzi, yeah.
Yeah.
Of Sunnyside, Burlington, for $4,000.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the amendment. Kathleen?
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Now the original motion is amended.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
And you can, you're used to working with Eric on this? You got it, Mohammed. Thank you very much. Thank you, Lindsay. All right, next, this is consideration of the sale of property locally known as 425 Hagaman Avenue, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Now, there are a lot of conditions on this particular property. Eric?
This is a vacant lot located at the corner of Hagaman and Amelia. It's property the city acquired a few years ago and have had listed. Had a purchase offer from Southeast Ohio Regional Planning Commission, or Southeast Ohio Housing, Inc., for $1,500 to construct a new home at this location. We've gone through this process before in an effort to improve some of the neighborhoods, getting a new home constructed or rehabbed to be owner-occupied and meeting some income guidelines. So some of the conditions on this property, there are some affordable housing restrictive covenants that state it must be an owner-occupied house for a minimum of three years, and the owner must meet the eighty percent average median income for the county. This, being a vacant lot, would be a new construction of a single-family home, meeting all our codes within the property. Work shall be initiated within one-hundred-and-eighty days and completed within three-hundred-and-sixty days of approval by the council, with another extension of one-hundred-and-eighty days granted if progress is being made. It does take a little longer to get contractors and plans for a vacant lot. Again, there is an affordable housing restrictive covenant for the property that runs with the property, is required to be owner-occupied for three years, and then have the owner meet income guidelines of Des Moines County.
Okay, questions? Anybody on that particular, you got any questions before we go on? All right, since it is city-owned, we are required to offer it for sale at auction, so if anyone out there is willing to bid, understanding all those restrictions, now's the time to come forward and say so. Evidently not.
I have a motion to close.
Second.
Okay, Kathleen?
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Have a resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 425 Hagaman Avenue, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Second.
And we don't need an amendment on this one.
Right.
Okay. Right, Kathleen?
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. That'll be a good addition to that neighborhood. Okay, this now is time for a public hearing, consideration of an ordinance rezoning Outlot Three of the Swisher subdivision from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Single Family Residential Transitional District. Okay, Eric?
Yes, this is the property recently subdivided, located south of West Avenue, part of the Swisher subdivision. This is requested to rezone from R1 Single Family to R2.
Thank you.
Single Family Transitional. Transitional District allows for duplexes on lots over 6,000 square feet. From the zoning district map, as you can see, it is zoned R2 to the north and to, basically along West Avenue, on the north and south side of West Avenue. It is R1 surrounding it as well with R4, kind of to the east. The Sunrise West properties are zoned R4 with a PD overlay, which is a little more dense than this would be, but their request, rezoned to an R2 would allow some flexibility with some possible duplex or condominium lots within the development as well. It is a maximum of a duplex on a lot in an R2 district. No threeplexes or apartments are allowed in an R2 district, so...
Good. Anyone from the audience have questions or comments concerning this item? Seeing none. Council, do you have anything?
I don't really, no. I think it's pretty straightforward.
I'm fine.
We're good? Okay?
Have a motion to close.
Second.
We have a motion to close a public hearing. Kathleen?
And have a second?
Probably.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Have a motion for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance rezoning Outlot Three of Swisher subdivision from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Single Family Residential Transitional District.
Second. Can I, I can second, can I? Can I?
No.
We have a motion in a second. Kathleen?
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on, this is time for consideration of an ordinance amending Section B Land Use Design Criteria of an Ordinance Number- of Ordinance Number 3104 of the Burlington Senior Living Campus PUD. Again, Mr. Tisland has...
This property again is on West Avenue, a little further west towards Gear Avenue. This again is part of the Burlington Senior Living Campus PUD, locally known as Rosebush Gardens. This property was rezoned in nineteen ninety-eight to include a PUD. With that, PUD ordinance, in nineteen ninety-eight, they stated that parcel shall have a front yard...parcel one shall have a front yard setback of one hundred and seventy-five feet. So this front parcel currently has a one hundred and seventy-five-foot front yard setback from the front property line to the front of the building. Typically, in an R1 zoning district, that maximum is thirty feet. Sunnybrook Assisted Living to the west is in a PUD as well. Its setback is required to be thirty feet. It is setback further, but the minimum requirement is only thirty feet, so this would fall in line with what existing code is and what existing requirements for other developments in this area are. They would like to do an addition on the front side of their property, on the north side of their property, and that one hundred and seventy-five-foot setback precludes them from doing that at this time.
Okay. Questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none.
Well, and I just want to say something I asked at the work session, and if people weren't here, because I wanted that clarified why that was before, which I guess it just had to do with the development at that time, so this would be more in line with what we actually do, so I have no problem with it.
Okay, Mr. Fleming?
Yep.
Oh, I have a motion to close.
Second.
So many. Wake up.
Okay, Kathleen.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
A promotion, a motion for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance amending Section B Land Use Design Criteria of Ordinance Number 3104 for the Burlington Senior Living Campus PUD.
Second. Motion in a second. Kathleen?
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
And that motion carries.
We get it.
Another public hearing, consideration of plans and specification for the Flint Hills Golf Course Pump House Project. Is this still under your domain?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Tisland gets to be a lot of camera time tonight.
Yeah, this again is the pump house project for the golf course is essential to our irrigation system at the golf course. We've been planning for this for a number of years now, looking at the condition of our pump and long-term, I guess, viability of it. We had in previous years done, tried to plan this in phases, but looking at the project and talking further to companies and experts in this that felt that that would not be a wise route to go, so we did have funding in last year's CIP, but did not move forward with that and reallocated that into this year's CIP as one large project. Currently, there's a one hundred and twenty thousand budgeted for this. We anticipated it to be between a hundred and twenty thousand based on some of our previous contacts, but again, this is a pump that controls our irrigation system at the golf course, which controls the ability to have play and use at the golf course in a quality manner. If that were to fail during the summer, especially summer like this where we haven't had much rain, it would be pretty detrimental to play and revenues at the golf course, so something that has been planned, something where our existing pump has reached its useful lifespan and wanting to replace it before it gets to a point where it fails in the middle of the season. We are accepting bids through Tuesday, October tenth, and hopefully we can bring that back and have it completed over the winter by March of next year.
Okay, that was gonna be my question. Questions or comments from the audience? Quiet group. Counsel, you have anything?
No.
A motion to close.
Second.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Have a resolution approving plans and specifications for the Flint Hills Golf Course Pump House Project.
Second. Motion, motion second, yes.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Another public hearing, consideration of an ordinance amending Section 126.16 Financial Responsibility of Chapter 126 Taxi Cabs and Vehicles for Hire of the Burlington Municipal Code. Chief?
Hey, Your Honor, Counsel. This was, if you remember, probably less than a month ago, we updated the taxi cab and the ordinances. Well, this part of the code was missed by counsel. Actually, it's a different part of this code section. I completely understand how it wasn't included when the other update happened, so, I mean, the bottom line, it just increases the financial responsibilities to the cab company. It's a law that's been affected by the state of Iowa, and we don't have the ability to change that or to lower that or to use any other standard, so that's just an update on that, if you have any questions.
And it's a million dollars, correct?
Yes, per occurrence.
Oh, okay. Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Again, questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none. Counsel?
No.
Motion to close.
Second.
All right, Kathleen?
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Your Honor, motion for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance amending Section 126.16 Financial Responsibility of Chapter 126 Taxi Cabs and Vehicles for Hire of the Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
My motion is second. Kathleen?
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Very good, we're moving right along. Nice going, folks. All right, this is another public hearing, consideration of a proposed 2017 amendment to the Burlington Urban Revitalization Plan.
This is being done kind of in conjunction with the sale of the Apollo School property during discussion with, of the sale of that. It was, I guess, discussed the options between utilizing TIF or expanding the existing tax abatement program. Currently, the neighborhood development urban renewal area has an expanded tax abatement program of seven years, one hundred percent, and then sliding scale seventy-five, fifty, twenty-five. That's roughly bound by Washington Street down to Locust Street and Main Street over to Central Avenue. This would expand that urban renewal area to include the Apollo School property as well as property to the north between Jefferson Street and Market Street and Central Avenue and Woodlawn Avenue. And then, as part of this as well, the existing tax abatement plan for this area was set to expire, and this will extend it another additional four years until June second of 2023, so that as part of this, the Apollo School development would qualify for this tax abatement program and would not move forward with any TIF request on that.
Okay.
But the expansion or timeframe would apply to all properties within the urban renewal area, not just the Apollo site.
Okay, questions or comments from the audience?
Tim Scott, 2017 South Fifteenth. That's the entire urban renewal area, the downtown area, and the Apollo will be extended to 2023.
Yep, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any others? Okay, Counsel?
Well, I just want to say I'm glad that the whole thing's been extended to 2023 because I know, I was on the council when we voted this in, and it just takes a long time for a developer to get their project finished, and I think it is for that reason too needed to be extended.
Good.
I have a motion to close.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to close the public hearing.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
I have a resolution adopting 2017 amendment to the plan for the Burlington Urban Revitalization Area.
Second.
Motion in a second. Kathleen?
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
I have to read this again. Motion for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance amending ordinances related to designating an area of Burlington, Iowa, as the Burlington Urban Revitalization Area.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second.
Essentially, this is the second, you have two different phases that you're doing. The resolution changed the boundaries, and the ordinance changes the tax abatement period and establishes that through 2023.
Okay.
I hope I did that right, Eric.
Yeah, I think actually there's, the plan talks about what's allowed within the boundaries and the term, and the ordinance originally designates the area from...
Ah, okay, I'll let you talk next time.
We have to designate the area twice from the ordinance and then within the plan. Not, it's something our bonding attorney requested and stated the process to follow.
Yeah, I saw that in there twice. Anyway, we're good?
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Okay, we're done with public hearings, now on to resolutions.
Resolution awarding contract for the 2017 Jefferson Street Parking Improvements.
Mr.?
Before you, is a resolution approving awarding bid to the 2017 Jefferson Street Parking Improvements. You just hit the, this is kind of a schematic of the current layout, and then the bottom is the, is the new proposed layout for parking. It'll create about nineteen spots. So you can see here, this will be kind of the new curb line. They'll show the, where the angled parking will be, and then you can see on the other side where it'll remove the planter boxes and where the parallel parking will be. If you'd hit the next slide for me.
So we're adding how many parkings?
Total of nineteen. There's currently four. We'll probably have to do an adjustment to the amount of the time and just revert to the rest of Jefferson. We went out to bid with a base and then an alternative. The alternative was to start the project in the spring. We had two bidders, the one did not bid for the base. MG Daily, we would recommend awarding bid to them for this fall. As you may have noticed, we put a notice in the, out on our, through the email system and on our website that we will likely start construction or some sort of demo work this week. We had pre-construction last week. It's a little presumptuous that you're gonna award bid, but we want to make sure that we try and save as much time before the end of the construction season, so...
And what's the timeframe? How long is it gonna take?
I would say about a month and a half.
Okay. And they're gonna close the whole street during that?
Yes, we will close the whole street for driving purposes. There will be some sidewalk access for the businesses.
For the businesses, yeah.
And they were out doing some work last week, and they talked to all the business owners on that section.
Okay.
And let them know of the project and the project duration and the limitations that they will have.
Thank you, Nick.
Yep.
Any questions from the audience or comments? Counsel?
Ben Air.
Okay.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Thank you, that's approved, next.
We have a resolution approving the preliminary plat of Park West subdivision.
Second. And Eric?
This again is discussing the property that was, I guess, earlier in the agenda for the Swisher property that was rezoned. This is the Park West subdivision, preliminary plat, sixteen-lot subdivision, again located just south of West Avenue between West and Mason Road and east of, or west of Garden Circle, Aspen Drive property there. This to go to the planning commission, which voted three to zero with one abstain to recommend approval of the development. Again, plating sixteen lots, providing for a street connection to the south property line, and installing required public infrastructure to city standards. There is a detention area in the northwest corner of the site, and then, again, having the street continue down to the south property line, there is an easement for a temporary turnaround there as well. This falls in line with plans for street connection. In nineteen ninety-nine, there's a Mason Road subarea plan that provided for street connections for a lot of these dead-end streets within the area, shown in blue here. Just, I guess, a plan being a guide, does show a connection from West Avenue to Mason Road. As development occurs, sometimes it can be more difficult to make those connections unless there's a plan and working together, and at least this phase does provide for the street connection to the south property line, with future streets to be connected as development occurs and as they lay out their developments and work with us on that.
Okay. Questions or comments from the audience?
Dan Cahill, fourteen fourteen Hillary Burlington. Yes, my wife and I are going to invest approximately a half a million dollars in this development, including the street sewer water, et cetera, extra plantings, and we do recommend, we do hope that the council will accept this plat. Originally, I wanted to do a cul-de-sac street to come in and cul-de-sac it out. It would've been a lot less expensive for me, but Eric and Charlie didn't think that was such a great idea, so they convinced me to put in a street that eventually, we hope, will connect to Mason Road. And as a matter of fact, my adjoining landowner to the south is Mike Moorfield, and he happens to be here today. I asked him if he could stop in because everybody says, who owns that other ten acres there? Well, this is the guy. He's an electrical contractor from Fort Madison and has experience in doing subdivisions. So I'm real happy that he's here to see how Burlington operates, and I'm hoping that in the very near future, he will plan a road that would go further south and connect up somewhere so that we can have it through the street to Mason Road. I think it's a great idea, better than my cul-de-sac idea. As far as, as far as the figures are concerned on this, I want the council to know that this piece of land, it's slightly less than eight acres, currently is taxed, and the gross taxes are four hundred and thirty-two dollars a year. And of course, the city's share of that is thirty-nine point four seven percent. That's what, if you look at your tax bill, and you see that's the city gets out of the gross taxes, that comes to a hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-one cents. So right now, the city is getting a hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-one cents in taxes per year. Not much. Now, after one of our prior meetings, I think the gentleman from the newspaper contacted Matt Warren, our local county assessor, a city county assessor. He assesses both for the city and the county. Nice fellow, too. He estimated that if this is developed as it's shown, it should generate a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars a year in taxes on these sixteen lots. And the city's share of that, at thirty-nine, thirty-nine point four seven percent, would be forty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars. So I guess my point is that what a good deal for Burlington. Going from a hundred and seventy dollars a year in taxes on this piece of property to forty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, plus the school system, as we also know, gets thirty-eight percent. They'll end up with roughly forty-five thousand in taxes also on this. And the poor county, who seems to get short shrift on most of these things, gets nine point three one percent of the tax dollar. So they'll get something, but not a lot. As you know, and we're not talking about TIF tonight because they're not on the agenda and you can't vote on it anyway.
Right.
I'm a big fan of TIF. And I would like to give, some of the council members received my accounting for Burlington's prior TIF project, the only one the city's done in fifteen years. That's for you, Becky, because you weren't here.
Yeah.
And that's for the mayor, because he wasn't here. So we'll talk about that at our next meeting, I hope. And I'm gonna ask Eric and Charlie to kind of keep this moving along on the council's docket. I honestly would like to put in a street this year, and I plan to do so, assuming after our next few meetings, we have a TIF district established. Because I think that too, and I have a lot of figures for that. We'll save that for our next, our next get-together.
Okay.
But thank you for, uh, considering this and I probably appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? No, counsel?
No.
I like it. Okay, Kathleen?
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Moving forward.
Resolution approving the final plat, the 15th edition of Flint Ridge Business Park Subdivision.
Second. Another one, Mr. Tisner?
Single lot final plat, uh, so does a minor subdivision, comes straight to council. Being a, a one-lot subdivision, 9.5 acres at the corner of West Burlington Avenue and the east and West Avenue on the south, uh, this is at the intersection of the roundabout. A portion of this property there is shown in hash line was acquired by the city for the roundabout. But, uh, again, this is a, a one-lot subdivision, meets all our zoning and subdivision code requirements, uh, does not require any new infrastructure, uh, for the lot, um, but just a minor subdivision requested by the, uh, Greater Burlington Partnership, uh, owners of the land.
Okay. Comments, questions, audience? Counsel?
None for me.
No, I just hope something's going to go in there, I guess.
Yeah, me too. The roundabout is fantastic, by the way.
I think it works great.
Kathleen?
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
One more.
Resolution approving agreement between the City of Burlington, Iowa and the Burlington Post Number 52 of the American Legion for use of banquet rooms, storage area, and an office at Memorial Auditorium.
Second.
This would renew the lease that we have on the property with the American Legion through May 1, 2020. The effective date on this is, goes back to May 1, 2017. We did not get to this, uh, through some negotiations with, uh, a legion, we had a few issues and, um, we discussed a couple of those at the last meeting. Uh, one, the insurance that solicited in section nine of the contract with the name, with their carrying insurance and listing us as an additional insured, which the council requested to keep on this. My understanding, speaking with Stephanie, uh, they are, were able to get this as a, onto their policy that they have out at the 48.
Oh, good.
So that should be taken care of. The other issue that was on that was a sticking point for the legion was, uh, the final term in here, which was eliminated. Uh, it had, and I think section 16, uh, with a, I think it's a 120-day notice provision, uh, for either party to, to terminate the agreement, or at least us, I can't remember what the exact terms were that were in it.
It was both.
You did, you did have that, agree to have that removed and I think that should clear up, although I haven't heard that they've officially voted on this, but we have taken care of the issues that.
Okay.
That, uh, were a major concern.
I thought they were going to meet tomorrow or Wednesday, wasn't it? Okay. Comments from the audience, questions? Okay, counsel?
None for me.
No?
Kathleen, please?
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel, thank you, audience. Now, it's the time for comments from, audience for, have any comments about anything we've not talked about already tonight? If you'd like to make a comment, please come and state your name and address and tell us what's on your mind.
I'm Freddie Starling, by 17 South 7th Street, Burlington, Iowa. First of all, uh, I would like to ask the question, uh, with the city council, and if I understand, the city council, uh, is over the city event, city happening, city tax, city water, city police department, and city period, am I not right? Just asking a question.
Yes.
Somebody answer?
Our job as a council is to set policy and give direction to the administration.
I was just asking, see the council question is on.
That's my answer. Our job is to set policy and oversee the administration.
I think the answer would be yes, they are over those, although the qual, there would be qualifiers depending on which one you're specifically talking about. You mentioned water and air, which is something that they do appoint members of the water board, but the water board, as an example, has full authority over that, uh, the council does not. So it kind of depends on what your actual question is on that, on how they would answer that.
Okay. Uh, so let's say, is the city council over the police department?
They certainly are.
Part?
They certainly are.
Okay, so that makes, that makes, uh, make, make them be, uh, you employ them, is that right? Is that right?
Correct.
You pay their salary and everything? Okay. Am I not right?
Yes.
I just want to know, I just want to know, okay. All right. Now, my question is, uh, I saw a lot go on tonight and we voted on it. You know, we have, we've had a death in the city and, uh, and being with, uh, the tragedy that took place. Out of it, I haven't, I have spoke with two people in what I'd say, uh, leadership positions, uh, in the city. I spoke with the family. And, uh, since the city, uh, pays their salary, that's why I was addressing it. I wanted to make sure, addressing it to the, to the council. And, uh, I could make a lot of judgment calls, but I'm not going to make judgment calls, I'm just going to mention, uh, what was mentioned to me. And, uh, that's taking care of all its citizens. Am I not right? No one say anything?
I'm not sure what your, what your point is, sir. What are, what are you getting at?
I just said the city council takes care of all of, should take care of all of its systems, all its taxpayers, all its citizens, that's all I'm saying. You take care of the police department, right? Take care.
Sure.
Okay, that's, that's, that's all I was asking.
But, but you know that.
Right?
But you know that.
Yeah.
I just want, I don't want to accuse someone and before I get the facts up front. I've been down here before and, uh, you know, I, I just want to have the facts. Reason I'm saying this is because, uh, things that have taken place and I, I feel for one that people need to have, uh, information. It's been, say, 24 hours since this happened and, uh, I come to you because the people are coming to me. I come to you, I don't know. No one has, as I understand it, as early today, contacted these people. That's why I come to you. Since you employ, uh, the people, or the police department, or you pay their checks or you employ. So no one has contacted his family. But basically, two people. One employed by the city, but we're both innocent. So what I'm saying is, I think someone from the city should contact these people. And this tragedy that took place, I don't know the facts, I'm not off into the facts, but I'm just saying what I feel and others feel and those themselves, that nobody concerned about them. So I come to you, since you pay their ta, since you pay their salary. So I feel like you in a position to say something to those people, some kind of way, that we're having a full investigation, uh, we'll assure you that justice will prevail, uh, offer them some kind of sympathy. I don't know what has gone on in the past, but I'm not about the past, I'm about right now. That's what I say. I say that to you as a city council. So I, I think, you know, I think everybody should, should, uh, be taken care of, not partiality, partial to certain individuals. And I've had that down here myself, so I'm not talking about something I heard of this or that. So that's what I want to say tonight. And, uh, I wish you would, I wish you would consider that and have sympathy for these people because they are hurting tonight. And I come to you because you pay their salary.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else from the audience have anything? Before we move on to staff? Excuse me.
Tim Scott, 2017, South 15th. I know the discussion has come back up about TIF financing and I want to take you back a, a distance to 1998 when, uh, the comprehensive plan for, for Burlington was put together and Susan Brown was, uh, was the chair of that board and there were not tens of people, there were hundreds of people that were involved in putting together the comprehensive plan. And I believe that Burlington's success, and yes, I believe Burlington has had a lot of success in housing, in commercial growth, in, in, uh, industrial growth, and, uh, the only, uh, downside is we've, uh, lost people, but we've, we've had some successes. Uh, and, and we did overspend at, at times, we hired a man and got us back on our, uh, financial footing, footing, so everything is good. And that, um, and it's because we followed a plan. And, uh, I believe the, the guy's name was Hardy Yost that had, uh, that, uh, that put Duraplastics out at, uh, the, uh, Business Park and he said, uh, why did you, that when the question was asked of him by the newspaper, why did you, uh, decide to build here instead of Muscatine or wherever it was? And he says, because Burlington has a plan. So we had a plan and policies in place, but we don't have right now for TIF as a policy for, uh, for the use of TIF. And I'm not saying I'm against, uh, TIF, the use of residential TIF, I'm against the use of it without having a policy in place. Because I feel, once you approve a TIF anywhere in town, that leaves it wide open. And yes, it's up to the council to decide, but I can tell you, five years from now, when somebody comes to do a development and maybe none of you are here, and that, that includes staff and council, what's going to be said is, well, you give TIF to that, uh, that nice gentleman over there on West Avenue and, uh, and, uh, oh, why can't I have it? There's no parameter set, there's no, there's no dollar amounts set, there's no, um, uh, limits on the, the dollar amount that, uh, that can be spent on the, on the properties or the houses or the, the, uh, the housing needs, there's no housing needs considerations. There's, uh, uh, basically no limit. If you, if your, if your goal is urban sprawl, then, then leave, uh, TIF open-ended. If it's infill development, then state it. If there's a housing market that is not being addressed, then address it. And the policy can be adapted as necessary, but I don't think we should leave it open-ended because we're going to see a rush for that gold mine. And, and basically, that's what it is. It's a, it's an opportunity for, for, uh, developers to, to, uh, well, basically make a profit, because they don't make much of a profit when there, when there isn't TIF unless they're building the houses too, uh, under their, uh, current circumstances. But I, uh, I just hate to see, see us rush through this and approve, uh, a, a TIF so they can start turning soil without having a policy in place first. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Any others from the audience? Seeing none? Chief Barrett?
I'll prepare a statement and I'll read that here in a second, but first and foremost, Reverend Starling has a point. It's a valid point. These investigations are extremely difficult and, and what makes it difficult is when you bring in another agency that's clearly trained to do these investigations and do them independently and do it right, we have one shot at that, to get it right. And the frustrating part is, is trying to release case facts, facts that could influence other interviews. And you say, well, it's been 24, it's been 48 hours, well, we, we have people that have called today that said, hey, here's what I saw. And it's really, really valuable information. And so the investigation's ongoing. I had two conversations with the reverend today. I mean, we have a meeting tomorrow, set up at, at 3:30 and I just wanted to express what, what he was saying, he has a really valid point. And I'm going to do my best to figure a way to at least explain the process and where this is going and hopefully get a better understanding for everybody, but it's really difficult. But with that said, I've, I just, I prepared a little statement here and over the next few days, witnesses, police officers and others will be interviewed. The names of the officers involved will be released immediately following their interviews with the DCI, that could be as soon as tomorrow. I cannot give you any further comments on the incident due to the nature of the investigation. The investigation has been turned over to the Iowa Department of Criminal Investigations. They control all of the news releases, that's their responsibility as part of this investigation. The Burlington Police Department will also conduct an internal investigation into the officer's actions after the DCI finishes their investigation. For now, the officers are placed on paid administrative leave per departmental policy. On behalf of the Burlington Police Department, I wish to express my empathy to the family involved. A loss of life and being part of a traumatic event such as this is a terrible burden for all involved.
Amen. Amen.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief. Eric, do you have anything? Nick, do you have anything?
May notice on Valley Street, um, between 5th and 6th Street. There's a fairly sizable hole. Um, they're, they're working on a sewer right now, I don't know the duration, probably most of this week. I don't know if it'll get bigger or not either, so Valley Street may be, uh, become inaccessible, it already is, but.
Right.
For the whole, for this whole week at least, so.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything else? Bruce, do you have anything else? No. Counselor?
Well, I guess, you know, I don't live far from where this tragedy happened yesterday and it, it's just a tragedy for our city and I just wanted to convey my sympathy to the family.
Mr. Fludding?
No, nothing.
Jim?
No, our, it's been a, it's been a heavy couple of days, uh, from a staff perspective, I think from a community perspective. Our, I've expressed to our police department, or my thoughts and prayers are with them as they go through their job. My thoughts and prayers are with all those who are impacted by this, it doesn't matter the circumstances, a loss of life is traumatic for everyone in, involved in it.
Amen.
My prayers are there with whoever is going through that and you've got a lot of people that are impacted. I have nothing else.
Nothing else. Have a motion for adjourn?
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion, second to adjourn, Kathleen?
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Thank you, folks, thank you, counsel, we are adjourned. Thank you, Jim.